So we'll go through this. Excellent. Hello, everyone. I'm going to call to order Woodstock's Planning and Zoning Commission regular monthly meeting for August 20th, 2020. I got 7:39 PM. And we'll go through a roll call, but what I'm going to do, I'm going to ask everybody who is not town staff or a commissioner to mute yourselves so we don't have any type of background stuff coming through, which would be important. So, thank you. I'm going to go through the role of commissioners so that way we have the attendance roster. Joe Adalena?
Here.
Mark Blackmar?
Here.
Sid Blodgett?
Here.
Gail Dickinson?
Here.
Nancy Frazier?
Here.
Jeff Gordon, I'm here. Jeff Marcott? I can see you, Jeff. You're here. Okay. Yes. David Morse?
Here.
Doug Porter?
Here.
Fred Rich?
Here.
Dwight Reinowitz?
Here.
And last but not least, Tim Young?
Here.
You will note for the record, we've met our quorum and we have a full contingent of commissioners. I am going to go through some meeting rules. If you've attended any of our Zoom meetings, this is not new information, but for those of you who have not, this is important information to pay attention to because these are going to be additional rules that we are following. And we're certainly following the usual rules that we have to follow. I will note for the record that this meeting is in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order 7B, and thus we're doing the social distancing. Although, and everyone is either here by Zoom or here by their iPhone. I've already mentioned about muting. So I do ask that you keep yourselves muted. But again, commissioners don't necessarily have to. A few other housekeeping things. If you note that Zoom does allow a chat feature. The chat feature is not to be used for sidebar discussions with commissioners, with staff, with other members of the public. We are otherwise having to adhere to the rules that we need to follow to conduct our business. The chat function is only to be used if you're wishing to flag us to be recognized to speak. However, it doesn't mean that you will be recognized to speak because this chair will have to decide that that's an order or not. Otherwise, there is a, was it a little hand symbol? That you can click that we can see to see if you're asking to speak. Do bear with us as we use the technology. It looks like we're up to 45 participants. So we do have to scroll through the list and see who is asking to speak and that type of stuff. So we are going to take it a little bit slow so we can try to cover everything as best as we can. The other is if you are on the phone and not connected via the video, you hit the star nine to raise your little hands so we can see you. We do have the ability to mute people. I will remind people that we do have to maintain proper order and decorum for our meetings. And so I hope this doesn't happen, but if for some reason we need to mute somebody, we will do that to maintain the proper decorum. Also, if you wanted to see a live transcript, there's a button called Otter AI Live Transcript. And you can click that if you wanted to. I think it's what it's, it shows up in the upper left corner of the Zoom screen, I guess. Oh, no, it actually shows up as a new screen.
Yeah, it'll open up as a new window so you'll make both windows side by side.
Yep, if you choose to want to do that. Otherwise, I'll get into some other rules when we get to certain application items, including rules of the public here when we get into that. Does anybody have any questions about the various meeting rules and guides in this era of needing to meet by Zoom? We're going to get into designation of alternates. There's going to be two parts for this. And I apologize ahead of time, this is going to be a little bit of kind of dense procedural stuff, but it's actually extremely important for the proper conduct of the meeting. Right now, we have a full contingent of commissioners. So technically, right now, I don't need to seat any alternates. However, I am aware that there may be some commissioners who may need to recuse themselves for certain agenda items. And if that does happen, and we need to seat an alternate for an agenda item, then I will so do that. In my practice, I do keep track, actually going all the way back to when I became Chair in 2011 for every meeting, what alternates were seated. So I try to keep it in a certain order as best as I can when we rotate through alternates. And we will get to that as well. The other is, before we get to, well, we'll get to that at the public, at one of the agenda items about how we're going to deal with seating alternates and stuff. I'll get to that for that agenda item so we can move forward. As far as my chair's report, this will be very quick. My usual thank yous to commissioners for meeting at least twice a month as we do our work. Thank yous as well to Delia Fay and her role as the Senior Regional NCOG Planner, and as well to Tina LaJoy and her role as the Zoning Enforcement Officer. I want to thank Crystal for all of your help getting our meetings set up for Zoom and helping us host the meetings so we can keep things going. I also want to thank Jay Swan, his first selectman, for letting Delia and I from time to time be here at Town Hall so we can literally be with the various files that we need. So thank you, Jay, for that. Also want to thank Christine French, who's our Assistant Town Clerk. She had been doing a spell for Land Use Clerk for, I forget how long. So we appreciate her help. She's no longer being the Land Use Clerk. Cindy Brown, who is actually listed as our Board Secretary as far as taking our meeting minutes, which she does a very good job with. So thank you, Cindy. She actually now is the Land Use Clerk, which is something that I appreciate we have. It was one of the things that I had advocated and several of us had advocated for previously because it really does help the functioning of the office. I know Tina appreciates it. So she can pivot to do some other type of stuff from a planning and zoning point of view. I'll get into further issues about where we stand with the Land Use Clerk when I get to the ZEO reports. But those are the usual thank yous. And of course, thank you to the public when coming to our meetings and participating and helping us do the work that we do for our community. Is there any citizens' comments? Not on any agenda item, but something that's not on any aspect of the agenda item? We'll scroll through the list and see. Otherwise, I imagine people are here for some of the agenda items. Okay, so I will note none. We have meeting minutes from July 16th, 2020. What is the pleasure of the commission?
I move we accept the minutes. Dave Morse?
And is there a second? Who wishes to join, David?
I'll second that. Joe Svalina.
All right, so let me just write this down. I keep a voting record because we are required to submit a voting record. So I do keep track of that. So that is to approve meeting minutes from July 16th, 2020 as presented. Is that your motion, David?
Yes.
Okay. And you're fine with that, Joe, to second?
I am fine.
David Morse made the motion and Joe Adalena second. Is there any discussion on the motion at here?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Gail Dickinson?
I just want to note for the record that I listened to the entire recorded meeting, even though I wasn't attending the meeting. So I feel comfortable voting on the minutes.
Okay, well, thank you for noting that. So that also is going to come up on one of the other agenda items later. So I'm going to ask you that question again. I'll ask it to you later. But yes, so thank you. So we will note that. If there's no other discussion, I'm going to go through.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Fred Rich?
Yes, Fred.
Our comment on page four.
Yes.
Last page. Motion was made by Joseph Adalena and seconded by Jeffrey Marcott to continue the public hearing to August 6th. Bob Wyler, the motion passed unanimously. The next line says the public hearing was closed.
That should not be. The public hearing was not closed. It should read, "The public hearing was continued." Thank you, Fred. So we will note that unless there's any objection, David and Joe, you guys made the motion and seconded it, that we change on page four that item relative to the Woodstock Country Store Gas Station that says the public hearing was closed to change it to the public hearing was continued. You guys are okay adding that to the motion?
Fine by me.
Okay.
Good catch, Fred. Thank you.
I won't wait once in a while.
Well, we all know that we read the meeting minutes. So you know, this way, you know, it just reinforces that fact.
That proves it, right?
It does. It does. So. So I'm going to go through the roll call unless anyone has any other comments on the meeting minutes. Joe Adalena?
Yes.
Mark Blackmar?
Obstained.
Yes, so abstained. Are you on, Mark?
He abstained.
Abstained.
Okay. Sid Blodgett?
Yes.
Gail Dickinson?
Yes.
Nancy Frazier?
Yes.
Jeff Gordon, yes. Jeff Marcott? I can't hear you, Jeff. Yeah, you're not muted, so we can't hear you. Is there something with your connection or do you have your? All right. Yeah, where is he now? I don't see him. Okay, because we do actually need to make certain he can participate. Jeff, can you, can you hear us? You can wave to say.
You're fine. Can you hear me?
Okay, good. So how do you vote on the meeting?
I can hear you.
Okay, we can hear you. How do you vote?
Yeah.
David Morse?
Yes.
Doug Porter?
Yes.
Fred Rich?
Yes.
Dwight Reinowitz? Did you just unmute yourself?
Yes.
Okay. Tim Young?
I also watched the video and I say yes.
Okay. I take that 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 passes. With the change noted. All right, so that takes us then to Agenda Item 7A, which is a non-residential zoning permit. This is Northeast Placement Services Incorporated, 312 Route 169. Map 5779 Block 64 Lot 19G, expansion of existing use. Let me find my file. And this item is not a public hearing. This is just a non-residential zoning permit. So what I'm going to go, as I normally do, is ask just a couple of questions. I don't know, Delia, did you handle this or was this Tina?
This was Tina.
Okay. I know the answers to these two questions, but I'm going to ask them for the record. Tina, this was a complete application?
Yes, it was.
And the fees were paid?
Yes.
Okay. All of these documents, my understanding is, was posted up on the town website for anybody who wishes to see our documents. Tina, from a staff perspective, is there anything from your point of view or you're fine with?
It appears to be, yes, this is Tina LaJoy. Based on the regulations, I did review this and it does appear to meet the regulations.
Okay. And anything else from your perspective?
Not at this time.
Okay. So I will open up to the applicant or the applicant's representative if there's anything you wish to say. You're not required to, but if there is something you wish to present or talk with us about, then you're welcome to do so. Otherwise, we do open it up then to the commission. The commission can ask questions and make comments and certainly then I can recognize you to respond if there's any questions. Who is here on behalf of the applicant or the applicant himself or herself?
Timothy Cattle.
Can you just speak? I just needed to hear who you were.
Timothy Cattle.
Okay. Thank you for being here tonight. Is there anything that you wish to say or present on this? Or we have the documents?
Yes, you have all the documents. I have nothing to say at this time.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to the commission and then in my usual manner, I tend to, as chair, be the last, I'll ask certain questions if they're not already answered. I'll open it up to any commissioners. Do any commissioners have any questions or comments? I don't hear anybody.
Jeff, just a quick question. I didn't see any notice on the application and I don't expect any, but just want to ask about any plans on signage or different lighting than what's already in place at the facility?
I'll recognize the applicant if you wanted to answer that regarding any proposed lighting or any proposed signs in addition to whatever sign is there.
I note there'll be no additional signage put on any of the buildings there and the lights will maintain the same look as the other buildings on the property.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything from any other commissioners? Otherwise, I'll ask a few questions. I'm just going to ask these just so that way I know the answers to some of these, but I want to make certain we have a few things clear on the record. My understanding is that the current square footage is 2,100 square feet. It's a proposed, I believe, 300 square foot increase, which would be less than the maximum 25% increase in gross floor area. And it would be compliant with the regulations in that regard. Although, that answered that question. And then the other is, it looks to meet the setbacks. Is that correct, Tina?
Yes, based on the site plan from Paul Archer, Licensed Surveyor, it does meet the setbacks.
Okay.
Forty feet for the side for non-residential, 60 feet per front.
And it looks like there's no new additional parking being proposed to be built. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And the building that's going to go up is going to be no higher than 35 feet?
No higher.
Okay, that meets the regulation. And then the other question I have is, I didn't see it in the file, but I'm assuming whatever plans are going to be submitted, that Mr. Archer is going to sign them and put his seal?
I would assume, yes, he was.
Okay, because that is required. So we'll just need to note that whenever I have to sign the MYLAR, that that does need to be done.
Okay, thank you.
No, but I think it still says, oh, that's right, I have to make certain we sign off. We just need to make certain that's taken care of for that.
But just to clarify, there's no MYLAR.
Yeah, that's fine. It's a non-residential zoning permit.
Right. No MYLAR.
Make certain that it's signed and whatever to be consistent with the final filing. I don't have any other questions. Those I just needed to make certain we had on the record to be thorough. Anything else from any other commissioners? Otherwise, if there, if no other commissioner has any questions, then we'll just make certain that nobody on the commission has raised his or her hand. Okay? What is the wish of the commission?
Move to accept the application as presented.
And that is you?
Second that.
That was Adalena?
And who seconded?
Dickinson.
Gail Dickinson. So, motion by Joe Adalena, seconded by Gail Dickinson to approve the application as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion on the table? Hearing none, I will go through the roll call. Joe Adalena?
Yes.
Mark Blackmar?
Yes.
Actually, I didn't need to, let me just correct something here. That and that, okay. Sid Blodgett?
Yes.
Gail Dickinson?
Yes.
Jeff Gordon, yes. Jeff Marcott?
Yes.
David Morse?
Yes.
Fred Rich?
Yes.
And Tim Young?
Yes.
All right, so that's nine full commissioners. That passes. Congratulations to the applicant, Tennesse.
Thank you very much.
Tina, you're going to do whatever magic you do for post-approval processing?
Yes, I will make sure that gets done.
Okay. Thank you for coming here tonight on behalf of Tennesse.
Thank you very much for having us. We appreciate this. Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item is a new business item. This is Agenda Item 8. This is number 643-06-27. Maple South Realty Trust, 11 Sennex Road. This is a proposed three lot subdivision, which falls under the category of minor subdivision. I'm just going to ask for the record, are there any commissioners for any reason on this agenda item who need to recuse themselves? Okay. I just do need to take care of a couple of housekeeping items on this agenda item. Let me just go through this here. Just so that everybody knows, and we have this on the record, this subdivision application review is being conducted per our current subdivision regulations. A three lot subdivision application is a minor subdivision by definition. And we follow the provisions of Chapter 3, Section 1, subsection A. Also, we'll go through items relative to Chapter 4 and Chapter 5, just so that way we have on the record certain of the applicable parts of the regulations. You review this, Delia.
Yes, I don't think we have all of the paper documents. There might be some things.
Well, I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to go through a couple of items to see where we stand because I do need to read a list of documents. This, well, I'm not going to ask yet about a complete application because that gets into another question. But fees have been paid, is my understanding, and actually looking at the file, they have been. I need to ask a couple of questions. Delia and I review this tonight, but is the applicant here? If you could let us know?
Mr. Chairman, David Held, Professional Engineer and Land Surveyor with Proloston Rivero, here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay. Thank you. I do need to ask some questions and this is important as far as how we're going to proceed tonight on this item. Chapter 5, Section 2, Subsection D requires that all owners of property abutting the site of the proposed subdivision, all owners of property within 500 feet, and all holders of conservation easements on the site, if there's any, have to be sent notifications of this application by certified mail return receipt no later than seven days after the application submission. This application was received, I believe, on June 18th. In the packet, there is a listing of abutters. However, I can't find any documentation in the file showing that abutters and all property owners within 500 feet of this property were sent notifications by certified mail return receipt. Mr. Held, has that been done for abutters and for property owners within 500 feet?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, could you go back to which section of the regulations you were referencing there?
I believe, if I'm reading this correctly, Chapter 5, Section 2, Subsection D, which is on?
49.
Yeah, depends on which copy you have. It's 51 in mine, but, yeah, 49. This is under the heading of Application Review Decision and Post-Approval Process. And this section two is about application submission of review. And it states, "The applicant shall notify all owners of property abutting the site of a proposed subdivision and all owners of property within 500 feet of any portion of the property proposed for subdivision and all holders of conservation easements on the subject or abutting property. Notifications shall be sent by certified mail return receipt requested no later than seven days after submission of an application as defined in these regulations." There is in the packet, a listing provided of abutters, but I don't find anywhere in the file documentation of the actual mailing to abutters and to property owners within 500 feet of any portion of the property. So I'll ask you, Mr. Held, has that been done?
Mr. Chairman, that has not been done. You may be familiar with the provisions. I believe it's Executive Order. Oh, gosh, I can't remember off the top of my head which one it is. But there's an executive order that was issued in response to COVID-19 whereby an applicant is allowed to post a sign conspicuously on the property, which takes the place of any such notification of abutters. And that has been done. That sign was placed, I believe, on the day that the application was submitted.
Let me ask our attorney, Rich Roberts, just to verify that that would cover it as far as abutters and any property owner within 500 feet? No, I thought Rich Roberts was on. Are you on, Rich?
He was. When we started the meeting.
Yeah, I just want to make certain he's still on. There he is.
I just came inside. There were too many mosquitoes.
We want to verify that our regulations require certified mail return receipt to all property abutters of a proposed subdivision and all property owners within 500 feet. And if one posts a sign on the property, does that, is that suffice per the executive order? I just want to make certain we're in order.
I think you also would have to have emailed everybody that you could get an email address for in order to have the sign take the place of mailing under the executive order.
So posting a sign alone isn't enough?
Probably not, but I'll look at that right now.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's David Held again.
One second, Mr. Held. The only reason, I just want to let people know, the only reason I'm asking it is just, we just need to make certain as we proceed for this, we're covering ourselves for the legal process. So that's why I'm asking it now. So we can verify. Mr. Held, did you have a comment?
Just a comment on that. I believe it's Executive Order 7I and it's number 19 in that executive order. It's pretty clear that you can send an email or post a sign. You don't have to do both.
We're just verifying it just to make certain because of the ins and outs of the executive orders, we need to make certain we're clear. These executive orders are very densely written.
Yes.
People ease. So. While Attorney Roberts is checking on that to make certain we're covered, the additional items I just need to make certain about is the documents we have is the application package, which is dated June 18th. And I just want to make certain all commissioners receive this in the meeting packet. The subdivision map, the proposed site plan and the detail sheet, updated as of June 17th of this year. Delia's memo dated July 22nd. Mr. Held's letter, what? Yeah, I'll get to that. Mr. Held's letter about an ENS control bond dated July 23rd. Delia's email notification to, or it was a notification to the Fire Marshal, to the Town Highway Department Foreman, July 22nd. to the town highway department, foreman, July 22. Fire marshal's email reply, July 29. Inland wetlands meeting minutes from July 13. And a letter from Gene Pillow as an individual, not on behalf of the Conservation Commission, dated July 16. Those are all the documents I could find in the meeting packet. So if any commissioner did not receive any of those in the meeting packet, then we should have them online. We can verify. That's all that I have right now for housekeeping. Rich, did you have a follow-up, just to make certain that we're fine with our process?
Yeah, I mean, the preference is email if you know the addresses or they can be reasonably available. Alternatively, you can put up a sign two feet by three feet on the property specifying the existence of the application and information regarding the date, time, and location of any hearing, provided that the sign shall be posted for the duration of the period for which notice is otherwise required. So if that's been satisfied, the sign would be sufficient.
Okay. I just wanted to make certain, so that way then we're covered for our process. Okay?
Yep.
From a staff point of view, Delia, is there anything that you needed to present to us? Or otherwise, we have the documents?
I had written my memo from July 22. I thought the application was completed, with the exception of requesting an ENS bond. Mr. Held provided one. He's proposing the ENS bond in the amount of $2,721.
Okay. I'll open it up to Mr. Held, if you... Is there anything that you wish to present or make the commission aware of? You're not required to. We appreciate that you're here, but if you wish to, this is your opportunity to do so.
Sure, I'll just point out some of the basics regarding the proposed subdivision. So it is three lots, one of which includes an existing house, which is a property. This property is located on the northeast side of Sennexit Road, immediately adjacent to the Thompson Tractor Facility, which is accessed off of Sennexit Road and Route 171. It's located immediately to the south of this property and was actually the free split originally taken off of this property. Each of the three lots contains the required minimum lot area, the minimum buildable area. We have a minimum frontage on each lot, so we do not have rear lots. We meet the minimum separation distance for driveways specified in your regulations. The property itself does not contain any wetlands on it. There is a small wetland area on the adjacent Thompson Tractor property to the south. The Wetlands Commission basically issued a finding of non-jurisdiction on the subdivision, because there is nothing on the site and there is nothing happening within the regulated area of that off-site wetland. So that was their, that basically constituted their approval of the subdivision. Each lot will be serviced by an individual well and septic system, and the subdivision has been reviewed and approved by the Northeast District Department of Health. We included a repair area for the septic system on the existing house, which my understanding is will be installed in short order here. And as Delia noted, the only staff comment that we really had to address was the preparation of an ENS bond, which was provided. And just to give you a little bit more detail on that, Delia's request, we actually broke that down on a per-lot basis. So I'm not, I'm not really familiar with how you handle the ENS bonding on a subdivision like that, but it is broken down on a per-lot basis. So other than that, I have nothing to present, other than what you've already discussed.
And the ENS control bond is in the, proposed to be $2,721. Am I correct?
I believe that's the total, yes, for the three lots. Somewhere there you should have an amended version of that, which actually breaks it down among the three lots.
So that's the document we have relative to the proposed bond?
It is broken down, right, but I... See if I can time that. I did, I have seen it, but I don't know where.
Okay. But the total amount is $2,721?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Held?
Not unless there's any other questions the commission has.
I'm gonna open this up to commissioners, and I'll just remind everybody, a minor subdivision does not require a public hearing, so we are not in a public hearing. Okay. Delia, do you want to ask?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Held, I can't locate that file, that record with the individual bond amounts. You could just state them for the record?
Sure. So the breakup is Lot 1 with $471. Lot 2, $645.
600, how much?
645.
Forty-five, okay.
And then Lot 3, $1,605.
Thank you. I'll open it up to commissioners. Any commissioners have any questions, comments, points of clarification? Let us know.
Got a question, Jeff?
Yes, Joe.
When you're ready. But two quick questions. One, the drawing pretty clearly shows that all three lots are in the town of Woodstock, but it is abutting the town of Thompson property. And I just want to confirm that all the land is in Woodstock, so approvals from Woodstock are sufficient, and there's nothing needed from the town of Thompson for this lot.
Mr. Held, did you want to answer the question regarding the all the property being in Woodstock?
Yes, based on our research, the property is entirely in Woodstock.
Thank you. Just a second question, and it may just be my interpretation of the drawings. On sheet number two of the drawings, it shows the primary septic fields, leaching fields, and I'm looking at Lot number two. The primary septic field is displayed as a certain size, and then the reserve area is shown graphically, but much smaller in size than the primary. Just wondering if they should be represented as essentially equivalent or equal in size as a reserve to the primary?
So if you also look at, I believe it's note number seven on that sheet, that gives some clarification for why that is the case. And this is pretty typical for subdivision designs, where you're just, you're showing your reserve area that's not necessarily going to be built, as long as you're showing something that's code compliant, that meets the public health code. So typically, when a septic system is actually built, if the soils are suitable, they would install a stone and pipe leaching system, which takes up a lot larger footprint, and that's what's shown as the primary septic area. And then the reserve is a manta system, which provides far more leaching area for each linear foot. So we only require one trench for that reserve area shown there. And that, the addition of that note number seven, even though we were calling these out specifically on the site plan, the health department requested that we add that note number seven just for clarification of perhaps why they were different sizes.
Okay, thank you.
Delia, did you have something?
I just wanted to state that my normal conditions for this property adjacent to the town of Thompson, a notice requirement should be sent to the town of Thompson. I don't know if that was done, and I don't know that perhaps the governor's order made that that wasn't required.
I'll ask Mr. Held, was the town of Thompson notified?
The town of Thompson was not notified. Again, my understanding was that sign would take the place of any required notification by mail on the part of the applicant. I don't know how Woodstock typically would do this, but in every other town that I've ever done business in, where there's an intermunicipal notification required, that has always come from the town. Again, I don't know if that's Woodstock standard policy, but I believe that the posting of the sign would fulfill that requirement by the executive order.
I understand the applicant has been noticed at the other town. The other town that...
If you want to speak up.
...has NACAR. I have to say, I work at NACAR, and I didn't notify myself. I said...
Okay. But Attorney Roberts, posting the sign, would cover this as well?
Yes.
Okay. So then we're covered. Okay.
Yeah, it includes notice to any other person, agency, municipal clerk, municipality, et cetera. You know, ideally, if certified mail was not available, you could have sent regular mail, but by the wording of the order, the sign is sufficient to take the place of the mailing.
Okay. Is there anything else from commissioners? Sid?
Two things. First, a question for Mr. Held. In, on Lot number two, the southern corner, there's a note about a footing drain outlet. Is that associated with the foundation of the house, the proposed house on Lot number two?
Yes, that would be the perimeter drain, typically installed around the footings.
Okay. So does that line, where does that line run in relation to the proposed septic system on Lot 2?
So it runs up gradient of it to the north there, and then it turns parallel to Sennexit Road and outlets just before the lot boundary there on the south side. They know notice that there's a 15-inch cross over there under Sennexit Road.
Yes.
Down gradient on Lot 1, so that's why that discharge location was chosen.
Okay. So that footing drain line and outlet complies with any regulations regarding the septic system and the roadway and everything else?
Yes, if it's constructed of tight pipe, which is standard, you're actually allowed to be, I believe, within five feet of the leaching area.
Okay. Thank you. My second point is not so much a question for Mr. Held, but this is statement. I'd like to recognize Gene Pillow's letter dated July 16. She is a member of the Woodstock Conservation Commission, so simply I'd like to thank her for her input, as well as the other Conservation Commission members. She does bring up several good points in her letter, most notably her insight about open space.
Sid, I just want to clarify, this is actually from her, not from the Conservation Commission.
Right, yeah, thank you. I'm aware of that. Under the prior subdivision regulations, the commission, at its discretion, could have requested a small amount of open space. This small contribution of open space could have had significant benefit to the residents of Woodstock, namely secondary or southern access to the Bull Hill area, much of which is owned by the Wyndham Land Trust and open to the public, providing much-needed recreation for those of us that live in town. Unfortunately, under the current regulations, this can't happen. Regardless, this is a good example of how and where and why open space provides good public benefit, regardless of its size.
Thank you, Sid. Anything else from commissioners? Hearing none. What is the will of the commission on this matter? Regarding a motion, one way or the other?
I make a motion, Jeff, to accept the application as presented.
I'll second that. David Morse?
Okay, so motion by Joe Adelata, seconded by David Morse, to approve the minor subdivision application as presented. And if it's okay with you, Joe, and David, we should also, in that motion, state that includes the ENS control bond that totals $2,721, with the Lot 1, 2, and 3 breakdown that was noted on the record. Is that...
It's fine by me.
That's acceptable.
You're okay with that, David?
Yes.
Okay. That takes us to discussion on the motion. I will go through a roll. Joe Adelata?
Aye.
Mark Blackmer?
This was tabled from the previous meeting. Am I, can I vote on this or not?
No, this was, this is the first time we're bringing it up. We tabled it just because we were waiting to get a ruling about inland wetlands, but otherwise, nothing else was done. So yes, you are able to participate and vote.
Then I say yes.
Sid Blodgett?
Yes.
Gail Dickinson?
Yes.
Okay. Jeff Gordon? Yes. Jeff Markcott?
Yes.
David Morse?
Yes.
Fred Rich?
Yes.
And Tim Young?
Yes.
That so passes. Congratulations, Mr. Held, and Tina and Delia, you guys will do whatever magic you do for post-approval process.
Yeah.
And we'll vote that then. Okay?
Thank you.
The next item is listed as a public hearing. This is Agenda Item 9A. It's number SP6400424. ND Swadia LLC, doing business as Woodstock Country Store. This is a special permit modification to the prior special permit 396-98-02. Located at 1484171, this is a proposed store gas station with apartment below. This is a request initially to let continue this public hearing to August 27, but we have since received documentation requests from the applicant's representative to continue this to our September 19 meeting, a September 17 meeting. There's two housekeeping items that I just need to let the commission know about. One is about how we're going to conduct this vote to continue. One is, well, regarding that, there were three commissioners who were not able to be in person at the voting and start of the public hearing. And that was back on July 16. Gail Dickinson, you've already told us that you listened to or watched the meeting. That's correct? You could just unmute yourself?
That's correct. I listened to the entire meeting, including the public hearing.
And Tim Young, did you do the same?
I did, yes.
Okay. Mark Blackmer, were you able to?
No, I did not.
Okay. Now, with regards to what we're going to do, as far as who can vote, we just need to make certain we're clear on the record. At the last meeting, all three alternates were seated. Our practice has been that if an alternate is seated and... But there weren't enough alternates to seat for every commissioner not there, and a commissioner then showed up. If there was no one seated in his or her place, that commissioner could participate with regards to voting, provided he or she attest to having heard the audio, or in this case, seen the video if needed. In the past, we've also followed a process that if a commissioner was not present, and an alternate was seated, and a commissioner then attends subsequent during a public hearing, but has not been able to listen to the audio or watch the video of the meeting, that commissioner cannot be seated. The alternate remains seated. We have also, a few times in the past, followed a process that if a commissioner is, has an alternate seated, that commissioner doesn't then get seated. The alternate remains seated. That's, when I look back over the years, that's been a process we followed. It doesn't happen often at all. But that's been, looking back, what the process is. Whatever process we're going to follow, we do need to make certain that... Whatever process we're going to follow, we do need to make certain that we are consistent with what we do. In the matter of Mark Blackmer, because you weren't able to attend the last meeting that had the start of the public hearing, and haven't been able to, excuse me, listen to the audio or watch the video, I won't be able to seat you as far as voting. You can still participate, but we won't be able to have you seated for voting, which means one of the alternates would be, remain seated in your place. The issue comes up relative to Tim Young and Gail Dickinson, how we're going to handle that. Just for matter of the record, I did talk with Attorney Roberts, so I could get his legal input. I don't know, Rich, if there's anything you wanted to speak to from a legal point of view of how the commission would be advised to, to handle it based upon what we've done before or what is the best practice relative to this situation?
Well, I think since, since the business before the commission tonight is simply to continue the public hearing, you can follow whatever procedure you are most comfortable with or most consistently follow. I think you need to pay more particular attention to who has familiarized themselves with the records and so forth when you get down to seating people for deliberations and vote after the hearing has been closed. So, if you want to have the hearing continued by those regular members who were here last month, the two who have watched the video and one of the three alternates, then, you know, I think that's perfectly fine. You know, the issue of who, who is, who is present on September 17th for that hearing, and if you do the deliberations and the vote that night or some future time, then I think you probably want to be more meticulous about who it is that's seated. But for tonight, I think it would be fine to go with the regular members, including the two who watched the video, plus one of the alternates who was there last month.
Okay. I'm not trying not to seat anybody, I just want to make certain we're clear on the record for how we're operating, so that way we don't necessarily trip ourselves up in our process. So, unless there's any objection, I'm fine as chair to, Gail Dickinson and Tim Young have both attested to having watched, listened to the last meeting that had the, the public hearing. Mark did not, so that would be one of the alternates to be seated. Looking at my notes, as far as where we are seating people, we're actually right now, for alternates, going through alphabetical order right now, which would actually, if I'm, if I know the alphabet correctly, that would be Nancy Fraser alphabetical order. I would seat you for voting on this one item about continuing the public hearing, unless there's any reason for you to be recused. Okay. The other item, I just want to make clear on the record. I did take some time to look through this and did include Delia and Rich on this. As you know, normally, we follow state statute. We are allowed 35 base days from the start of the opening of the public hearing within which to close the public hearing, but we can have up to 65 additional days from state statute, if the applicant consents, to continue a public hearing. The added wrinkle is that per executive order, we can have up to an additional 90 days on top of that. So, in order to make certain we're not unnecessarily, or unintentionally running out of any time that might be needed, the way we will do this is we've already taken 22 days, I believe, of statute time, when we've already continued this up until, well, it was supposed to be up through, I believe, the sixth, but then that ended up getting changed because of Hurricane Isaiah's. So, any additional time to be taken to continue this to September 17th would be time allowed by executive order up until, I believe, Rich, September 9th we can do, and then any time after that to get to the 17th would come out of state statute time.
Correct.
Just so that we're keeping track of the record as far as what we're doing. So, you know, we are keeping track of that here in the office, so just so it's clear on the record what time we're taking out of which bucket. So, and we don't know if the executive orders are going to be renewed or what's going to happen come early September, but we just need to have that clear on the record. We do need a motion to continue this public hearing to September 17th. That's our regular monthly meeting. We do tend to schedule public hearings to start at 7:45.
Move to continue the public hearing until the next meeting, as noted.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
That was Tim? Okay. Let me just mark this down on the, on the, on the voting record, so that way I have this here. And I'll go through the roll call, that's the motion on the tables. Are any discussion on the motion on the table before I go to the roll? Okay. Joe Adelata? Joe, can you hear us?
He's muted.
Oh, okay.
You're muted, Joe.
I'm off mute now?
Yes.
Okay. On the agenda, it indicates the continuation of this public hearing was requested to August 27th?
Yes, what happened was, that was the initial request.
Right.
When that was made, then there was a subsequent letter sent in.
So, to the, right, to 17th, okay.
Yep.
Aye.
I believe I emailed that out to every commissioner.
Yes, you did.
As soon as we received it. We didn't have time to change this because it happened after we mailed it, but yes, technically, that agenda item should now read September 17th. Thank you for noting that, Joe, because we just want to make that clear on the record.
Right.
How do you vote on continuing?
Aye.
Sid Blodgett?
Aye.
Gail Dickinson?
Aye.
Nancy Fraser?
Aye.
Jeff Gordon, I'll say aye. Jeff Marcott?
Aye.
David Morse?
Aye.
Fred Rich?
Aye.
And Tim Young?
Aye.
I take it that that passes? We are noted that this public hearing will recommence, at least as of now, at 7:45 PM on September 17th. Thank you. Let me move my files. That takes us to Agenda Item 9B. And I just need to note this here. This is a public hearing. This is on SP 6410625, 599 Route 169, Rusty Relic. This is, this is a proposed mixed use of retail slash commercial and residential. There are a few housekeeping items that I need to do. One is, are there any commissioners who need to recuse themselves for the record? I know the answer, but I just need to ask.
I do, Jeff, Dave Morse, I recuse myself.
I also cannot be seated for this one.
Yep. So, I will note for the record that David Morse and Nancy Fraser are recused. We do need to have somebody then to be seated for David Morse in continuing things alphabetical. That would take us to Jeff, no, take us to Doug Porter. Are you, any reason you need to be recused on this, Doug? Are you okay being seated as an alternate for this?
I'm okay to be seated.
Okay. Congratulations, Doug, are you going to hold us a big party tomorrow in the usual manner when we seat you?
Absolutely, Jeff.
Excellent. We're looking forward to that. So, when we're done with this meeting, we'll all make arrangements for that. I do need to go through some housekeeping on a public hearing, so just bear with me real quick. So, people want to know, if you've not participated in a public hearing before, a public hearing is going to be the only opportunity for you as the public to ask questions or present any information that you wish to present or make any comments. Once we close this public hearing, there is no venue for the public to provide anything further. This is also the opportunity for the commission to ask, commissioners ask questions, and also for us to have, to get staff input, or if the staff has any questions. In keeping with trying to run the meeting as productively as we can, and also that we do have some time limits for how late we can be here at Town Hall, since we can't unfortunately hang around here until the cows come home, we are going to limit, not the applicant or the applicant's representative or commissioners or staff, any member of the public who wishes to speak for the first time needs to be recognized by me as the chair. I will give you three minutes to speak, after which you are done speaking. Any, any member of the public who wishes to speak for a second time is only going to be recognized for two minutes with one condition, that either you have a new question that has not been asked before, or you wish to provide some new comment that has not, that you have not presented before or has not otherwise represented. To speak for the second time on something that's already been said will not be recognized. This is a public hearing for the special permit. We're following the provision, provisions of zoning regulations 5B. We will also note that Article 3B, 3B does allow for retail commercial uses in the community district. This property does reside in the community district, and it requires a special permit to be, to be a special permit approval to go ahead. As always, this commission acts under the authority given to, given to us by state statute, especially Chapter 124 and by applicable town ordinances. And our purpose is to promote public safety, public health, and public welfare, although we have some other jurisdictional matters, including we do get involved with economic development matters because of what's contained in the zoning regulations and other documents, including the zoning map. I will note for the record that this has been posted, the public hearing has been posted in local newspapers. This has been posted in the, this looks like the Villager. Yep, this has been posted in the Villager on August 7th and August 14th, so I believe that means we have met the state statute for how this needs to be posted as well as in accordance with executive orders for that. We also have this notice posted on the town website, so we have double even covered. I did look at the file, but I will ask the applicant or the applicant's representative this straightforward question, that it looks like property owners have been sent mailings based upon documentation we've received. Is that correct? Mr. Guskowski, can you just state your name, you're here for the applicant?
Correct. For the record, John Guskowski, Senior Planner with CHA Companies, based in Storrs, Connecticut. On behalf of Jamie and Jason Bosley, the applicants, yes, Butters have been notified via mail, and we, we sent indication of that as part of our application supplementary information on August 10th.
And that also includes any property owners within 500 feet, or I know you guys posted a sign.
That is correct, we have done both.
Okay. And you posted a sign, it looks like that's on the corner, so my understanding is you did that to cover the signs that have to be posted on each street? And there's two streets, so the corner there is my understanding why you posted the sign there, to cover both streets?
That is correct.
Okay. And I know the answers to these two questions, but we'll note it for the record. Delia, you reviewed this?
Yes.
The, the application is complete, the fees have been paid?
I actually don't see the fees, so I didn't...
Okay. Well, we, I, I'll note for the record that it is in the file that the fees have been paid.
Yes.
So, we will do that. And this application was received appropriately by planning zoning at its July 16th meeting, so that covers us for Article 5B 1E. And then I'm going to go through a list of documents. If any commissioners do not have these documents in the meeting packet, let me know. There are a number of them that I want to make certain it's clear on the record. We also post them up online. The application package dated June 8th. Development review checklist, notification of the water department and state DPH. Site development plan originally listed as June 8th, but there are updates of July 29th and August 10th. A traffic impact study by Teresa Engineering, which is... What, Tisara, okay, and that's like what, 40-something pages?
Yeah.
We have a letter from John Guskowski about the proposed use, potential off-site impacts, and special permit criteria being met dated August 10th. We have a bond estimate. We have a letter from Delia Fay, August 9th. My question is, Delia, you raised a question if that was in the meeting packet. Do commissioners have that in the meeting packet? I get these documents a bit separately as they come in, so I can keep track of them. But do you have in your meeting packets a letter from Delia, August 9th? So, I'll take that as a yes.
I'm, I'm looking through the, all the documents, Jeff. Haven't seen it yet, August 9th, right?
Yes. Let me pull the file to tell you what it is.
Is that an email or a letter?
It was a memo, right, Delia?
Yes.
I'll, I'll tell you what it is. Only reason it's important is I want to make certain that we, of all these documents, we have what we have. Let me just find it here. I have a big folder on this.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, there is a memo from Delia dated August 10th?
No, this is August 9th. It is a memo that is two pages long, going through a list of items or questions and comments that she has. Then there is a letter from Pete Parent, looks like in reply, dated August 10th. And then there is a follow-up email from Delia, August 10th. But there's an initial memo letter dated August 9th. I just need to make certain commissioners did receive a copy of it. I did not see it online. So, I don't know if it actually may, did not make the meeting packet, or does it may not have been posted because it may not have made a, a, a file. But if commissioners don't have it, we just need to note for the record, that's a document, then we are going to need to make certain we get in. We can't do that tonight, but there's going to be a separate question I'm going to ask Mr. Guskowski that will cycle back to, to us trying to get this letter into the record for the public hearing. So, we will note that we do not have this letter. Two commissioners are online at this point, so. Otherwise, we have correspondence from members of the public. Jean and Jack McLealn, July 30th. Marilyn Pomeroy, August 1st. Jean and Jack McLealn, August 9th. Pam Chase, August 10th. Alexandra and Bruce Lyman, August 10th. Mary and Dan Apwood, August 10th. David Stone and Jennifer Watson, August 10th. Frank Ola, August 11th. I will remind everybody that we do need to be careful about discussing documents we either have not yet been able to enter into the public record or documents we have not yet received, just because it wouldn't be fair to commissioners and the applicant, staff and the public who don't have any such documents, to be able to fully discuss it. The other item that I need to note for the record, because this is important, is the commission did hold a meeting on July 2nd, it was not part of a public hearing. This was to make a ruling about the zoning regulations. This commission interprets the zoning regulations. To allow the special permit to proceed to a public hearing after discussing and getting input from staff, including legal input about the proposed... discussing and getting input from staff, including legal input about the proposed mixed commercial and residential uses in a current residential building. And we did have discussion, it was a public meeting, the commission did rule in interpreting its bylaws, that, I mean, its regulations, that this special permit could go forward to a public hearing. There was no ruling on any other aspect of this special permit, it was purely procedural. But I do want to make that note for the record, so that way it's clear in case that question comes up, that has already been taken care of and handled by the commission. One other housekeeping item, I just wanted to let the commission know, I did try to see if we could get a copy of the historic district commission minutes. I have been told today that no such minutes have yet been made available and received by the town. This is a meeting that was held, I believe, on July 22nd. Technically, it's beyond, I think, what the state statute permits, but that's up to that commission in submitting its meeting minutes. However, I've been told today by that commission that meeting minutes should be forthcoming, so that way, in case any commissioner wants to see, read those commission meeting minutes, then once the town gets them, the town will post them. So, but the town hasn't received them yet. So my question then, just from, so it's clear from a process point of view, Mr. Guskowski, my understanding is that there's going to be a follow historic district commission meeting on the 26th? Is there the possibility then, following anything further with the historic district commission meetings, that any documents, maps, plans may potentially undergo some changes, in which case that would be very important on bearing for how we, not so much how we proceed tonight, but whether or not we have to continue the public hearing beyond needing to get that additional document in the record? Mr. Guskowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, John Guskowski for CHA, on behalf of the applicant. Boy, I hope not, is the answer. We have, again, as you noted, the minutes from the historic district commission have not been posted, nor has the applicant been sent a written notification of the denial for certificate of appropriateness, that we should detail the reasons for denial per their bylaws. So it, our redesign of the site plan required, obviously, you know, responsiveness to the concerns that were expressed by the commissioners and members of the public at the historic district commission that we participated in July, and we have made site plan changes. We believe that this is sufficient to respond to their concerns, but in truth, we do not know.
Okay.
We suspect that most of them had to do with the, sort of the amount and location of parking, and we have pushed the parking back, and we can get into this during our presentation. We've made changes to the site to be responsive to historic district concerns, but I honestly, you know, I can only say, I hope that it is sufficient, and we won't have to make additional changes.
The reason I'm bringing it up is that if there is the possibility, that that would have to be another reason to continue the public hearing beyond that additional document that didn't get entered into the record. I just wanted to ask that, just because of, I know you're going through things with the historic district commission, and so we're mindful of that. But we just, you know, need to make certain that we know where we stand on the record with, you know, could there possibly be, not knowing what will come from that meeting you guys have? So, yeah. Delia?
I just wanted to state that I don't believe I have the site plan on the website. I know we're supposed to do that, I don't see it on there. I've put everything on.
Right, yeah, stuff that's sent to you, I know certainly, Crystal, you put on. There's no site plan, you mean the maps, on the website?
I didn't see that.
Okay. Well, technically, we are going to have to continue this public hearing for two reasons. One is because there may be a possibility of changes, we don't know, but also because there's at least one document that has not made to commissioners or been posted. But you mean all of these maps did not make it onto, I thought?
Maybe I'm just missing the name of the file?
Okay. Well, it's, it should be, because we're going to need to see the pictures. Tina, are you on?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yep. Do you know if things got posted for this Rusty Relic special permit that contains the maps, or the, not the maps, but the...
I have the response to my questions, but I don't see that.
But the actual, like, is it up here in that, in any of those pages, 21 pages? Do we want to go through those 21 pages? See it up there?
Well, maybe, I didn't think.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
No, one second, Mr. Guskowski.
It's there.
One second, we're going to verify.
I didn't think about that, because I didn't see the file.
The question was raised, we'll just, we'll verify it just to satisfy it for the record at this point. But I believe it is, I thought I had, I thought I had seen it. But it should be in these documents, just keep on scrolling, it should be in one of the doc, set of documents.
It should be in there.
Yeah, because I thought I saw it. But because the question's been raised, let's just verify to be thorough. There's another set of, yeah, here we go. Yep.
Sorry, I didn't realize that file.
Yep. And that way, keep it up on here, because this way, then, we can have the maps. So, at this point, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask staff if there's anything from staff perspective. Delia, you reviewed through this. Is there anything from your perspective, before I open the floor to Mr. Guskowski?
I sent my email on August 12th, I'm sorry, August 10th.
Yep.
Asking if the recommendations from the traffic study have been incorporated into the proposal. I don't remember getting a response to that.
Is that a question, or are you just a comment? And we'll get into that during the rest of this, or?
I guess a comment about how I don't recall getting a response to my email.
I'll ask Mr. Guskowski.
Was the email to Pete Parent?
Oh, Pete Parent.
About whether the recommendations from the traffic study have been incorporated into the proposal?
And, okay. Is that stuff that you're going to be speaking to, Mr. Guskowski, in your presentation, all these different documents, including anything that Mr. Parent was involved with?
Yes.
Okay. We'll leave that then, when you give your presentation, so that way you can go through it all. Is there anything else from a staff point of view?
No.
Okay. Mr. Guskowski, thank you again for being here. If you want to go ahead, we'll present, and as we look at these maps, we're going to try to enlarge them and look at whatever sections you need to refer to, so that way we all can see it, other than the big copies that we all have, or the, as commissioners.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, John Guskowski was Senior Planner with CHA Companies. On behalf of the applicants, Jamie and Jason Bosley of Rusty Relic, who are with us this evening, and I would be happy to include in the presentation and in response to any questions that the commissioners may have. I'm also joined...
They wish to do that, certainly.
I'm also joined by Pete Parent, Professional Engineer with CHA Companies, who is the primary site designer for this project, and will go through some of the design details, as well as the response to comments. In very brief, I think at this point, the commission is very familiar with the property and the proposal. To keep it relatively simple, this is a property at the corner of Route 169 and Childs Hill Road, most recently owned by Woodstock Academy and used as student housing, with the acquisition of the former Hyde School and the dormitory space that went along with that. The academy no longer needs this property for multifamily or student housing, and is selling it. Our clients, Jamie and Jason Bosley, are already business owners in town. They own the Rusty Relic with the location in South Woodstock, in the Scranton Shops complex. They also own a second location of the Rusty Relic in Coventry, Connecticut. It was their desire to consolidate their operations and move them to a facility that they owned and controlled. They very much enjoy being part of the Woodstock community, and were seeking a location that was appropriate for the character of their business, and also reflected well on the character of Woodstock community. And they found this location at 599 Route 169 to be extremely suitable. The proposed changes to the property are relatively minor. What is, again, the property in question is a large old house. The Bosleys wish to use the ground floor of that house for the retail use of the Rusty Relic, and as well as to use the barn on the property for, you know, storage, and some potential overflow display for the retail operation as well. Some site improvements need to be, and I'm sorry, I should say, the upper level of the house is intended to continue to be used as residential, will be a rental apartment. Some site improvements need to be made to make sure that this functions properly as a retail location, and according to the Americans with Disabilities requirements. So we are upgrading the parking area. Most of the parking area will continue to be gravel parking. A couple of spot, spaces are needed to be paved with asphalt in order to be accessible to ADA. We will connect, and actually, Delia, if you could scroll down to the site plan on the second page, so people, so I can refer to the specific changes. Thank you. A pathway from the parking area, I'm sorry, it'll be the next page, that's existing conditions. Oh, yeah, here we go. So a pathway from the handicap parking and the parking area to the building itself will be created, as well as a ramp from sort of the eastern side of the building to the southern side of the building, the front of the building, which will be the main entrance. That will be an ADA accessible ramp, built in a manner that's architecturally appropriate to the, to the, to the house. And the banisters on the turn at the handicap ramp will reflect the existing porch banisters or railing. In addition, we are treating stormwater by creating a landscaped rain garden there on the, sort of the eastern property. There will be some trimming of bushes to sort of allow for the rain garden installation to improve views, or so it's somewhat overgrown at this point. One tree will need to be removed along the, for access of the driveway, because that will need to be widened. There is currently a driveway at both Childs Hill Road and Route 169. The Childs Hill Road will be the driveway for the business. There will be no egress allowed at the 169 driveway, because that is a dangerous driveway. It will put signage up to that effect, and also based on recommendations of the traffic engineer's report, will be trimming back some of the trees and hedges that are in sort of the far western corner of the property, along the state right-of-way, to improve sightlines as you are heading southbound on Route 169 towards the intersection of Childs Hill Road. We will be not adding any sight lighting at this point, and do not intend to. The proposed hours of operation are generally proposed to be between 10 and 5, and so only in very end portions of the year, as it gets dark early, after daylight savings time, will it get dark, you know, before 5 o'clock. So it's not believed that any additional sight lighting needs to be considered at this point. And there will be a sign placed on the corner of Childs Hill Road and Route 169, but it is basically the same sign that the Bosleys currently have, along a different section of Route 169 in South Woodstock, which is just a simple wooden sign, will be relocated. There will also be a dumpster placed on the property alongside the driveway, the Route 169 driveway, which will be placed on a pad and landscaped, fenced and landscaped, so it is not visible. There will also be a small, or a concrete pad placed in front of the barn to stabilize that area, and to prevent, you know, tracking of, you know, furniture equipment, other things like that, going in and out of the barn. We have, we have submitted a letter addressing potential off-site impacts. We believe that the traffic noise, odor, dust, vibrations, all of those things will not be, become issues, will not be generated by the proposed use. It's a very friendly use to this area, and in fact, one that your Plan of Conservation and Development pretty specifically expresses preference for. And in fact, the Plan of Conservation and Development encourages the permitting of, quote, "desirable small businesses," unquote, in village areas that require minimal change to existing buildings and sites that ensure growth is harmonious with the historic character of the community. And this expressed desire matches very, very closely with what the Bosleys saw in this property. They saw an opportunity for their desirable small business, their business that already contributes to the historic character of Woodstock, that could be placed in a way that really, with very minimal disruption, very minimal site change, really enhances the character and contributes to the character of this historic small village. So it's, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about this, but the actual proposal is very simple and very straightforward, and it's, it will allow for the continued preservation of this historic property in this historic district, to be an extraordinarily appropriate small business retail use on Woodstock Hill. And we would be happy to answer questions. I'll ask my colleague Pete Parent if there's any technical details that you wish to add before I sort of turn it over to questions, or if the Bosleys would like to speak perhaps after that.
Well, what I'll do is I'll ask Mr. Parent, is there anything that you wish to present or bring to the attention of the commission, understanding that we don't have one of the documents to be able to have a full discussion tonight about?
Certainly. So Pete Parent, Professional Engineer with CHA, for the record. Just in response to Delia's comment regarding response to her email from August 10th at 2:41 PM regarding the recommendations of the traffic engineer, I did send her a reply to that at 3:56 PM, and that included a slightly modified set of plans that I don't believe you have included here as well. So we'll make sure that we get those to you, so they're also posted on the website. That revised set of plans just includes some additional notes reflecting our...
Let me interrupt you for a second. Are you, because this is an important issue, are you saying that there is an additional set of plans that was sent, or has yet to be sent, that we don't have for the purpose of this public hearing tonight?
Correct. We sent a revised set of plans that included some additional notes that aren't included on the set of plans that you currently have included in this larger response to comment package.
Okay, because that's an important issue, because then we're not looking at technically the most up-to-date set. What is the date of that updated revision?
They were also dated the 10th. It was, we submitted these plans the morning of the 10th. Delia responded with some additional comments regarding the traffic impact study and Tess's recommendations. We revised the plans to include some additional detail in response to that, and resubmitted them at the end of the day on Monday, the 10th.
Okay. So we just need to note for the record, right now, we don't have?
No, I have that, but I must have missed it.
I don't, so the set of plans that we have, looks like that that's the orig, that's the first updates from August 10th, Mr. Parent, not the second set?
Correct. The set that are currently being displayed are the first set.
Okay, so we just need to note that for the record, this will be another reason to continue this public hearing, because technically now, we're looking at plans that are quote-unquote "old." We don't have the current set of plans, so we'll need to note that, and we will need to make certain that we're going to get that out to commissioners in whatever next meeting packet we're going to deal with, and then at that time, we'll be able to post that. That is an important item, I was not aware of that. So I appreciate you mentioning it, Mr. Parent, but we will need to note for the record what we have and what we don't have. Okay. Is there anything else in your presentation, Mr. Parent?
No, I believe Mr. Guskowski covered most of the details. I'm here to answer any technical questions. No, I believe Mr. Guskowski covered most of the details. I'm here to answer any technical questions that are in regard to the site plan, but I think John did a good job of covering the nuts and bolts of it.
Okay. And I will once again make my caution as chair. We do need to be careful when we get into discussions on documents that we evidently don't have right now for us for the public record. I will ask the applicants, if they wish to say anything, you're not required to. Thank you for coming here tonight, but if there is something you wish to say or to add, you know, certainly you have your opportunity to do so. If you so choose, I'll offer that opportunity out to you. If you wish, otherwise, you do have Mr. Guskowski and Mr. Parent who have already spoken on behalf of the application.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you please state your name for the record?
Jason Bosley.
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to say that, you know, four years ago, we opened a store in Coventry. And a couple of years ago, we started in Woodstock and boy, our sales tripled. So, you know, now we're the most followed country store in New England. You know, and you got people coming from a couple of hours away. And, you know, when they come into the store and they cash out, everybody always says, you know, is it a good place to eat? What do we do from here? So we always tell them, you know, Sweet Evelina's, Anna at Woodstock Hill, the mansion, Woodstock Gorges, Taylor Brook, the Christmas barn. So I think it's great for the economic and Woodstock, you know? So I just, we're so happy here and we want to continue business in Woodstock for sure. It's our home now, so. I know my wife has something to add. She's right here. Put her on the spot. She doesn't like talking, but she
Good evening.
Please state your name for the record.
I'm Jamie Sterns. Owner of the Rusty Relic also. If anyone had any questions for us, we're here to answer anything. If not, I think Pete and John did a great job.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to commissioners. Again, I know commissioners, there are a couple of documents we don't have. So we will, we will deal with that at the next phase of this public hearing. But at least that, you know, we can have, if there's any questions right now, based upon what we have, I'll open it up to the commission. Any questions I have, I'm going to have to wait for some of them to see what goes up in the new documents. They may, that may answer my questions, but I'll open up to commissioners. If there's any comments, any questions from commissioners, let us know.
Yes, Jeff.
Yes, Joe.
Hi. Just have a few that maybe I can just go in order and it might help others who are looking at the drawings. If I can ask Mr. Guskowski, on the drawing, the plans, page one of four of the plans that we have, I count something like 16 trees being shown in the area where the rain gardens will be. And in comments about preparing the site, I think I've heard something like maybe one or two trees may have to be removed as well as some brush clearing, which sounds okay, but then I look at page two of four that shows the rain garden. And that's what I'm looking at. Thank you, Delia, for putting that up. Those, I count about 16 trees shown there. The next page shows none of those, even though the comments are about just cutting down one to widen the driveway. Are they just eliminated from this drawing for clarity purposes to show the rain garden?
I don't know, Mr. Guskowski or Mr. Parent, if you wish to answer that?
So they're there, Mr. Adelata. They're a little bit faded. They're a little bit faded out.
Record again, John, I just want to make certain we can have you listed that you're talking.
For the record, John Guskowski. Yeah, Joe, they are there on the site plan. They're faded out a little bit, made a little bit less prominent in the drafting. Delia is pointing them out with her cursor. The rain garden is designed to work around and between the trees. But they're there on the site plan. It's just a little bit faded.
Thank you. It was hard to see them on the drawings that we have. But I can see where you're showing them now on the screen. Just another question, and it may relate to Mr. Parent's response back to Delia on her question specifically about that driveway onto Route 169. You've commented a couple of times, John, about putting signage to prevent egress from that driveway onto Route 169. But the traffic study recommendations indicated putting a physical barrier, a gate on that to really prevent entrance or exiting from that site. Is the new plan or response including a confirmation that a gate or a structure would be put in place to prevent entry or exiting from that driveway onto Route 169?
Mr. Guskowski?
Again, John Guskowski. Yeah, I believe the, and Pete Parent can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe the new plans show a gate, but we are, we are completely fine with the addition of a gate as a condition of approval.
Okay, that was a safety issue of major concern. And then finally, perhaps this would be for the owners about the display on the lawn or porch or intentions of how to promote the business similar to what's being done now at the Rusty Relic site on, in South Woodstock. Is the intention to display items in the yard on the porch to draw attention to the store?
I'll ask the owners of Rusty Relic if they wish to answer that.
Yes, hi. Jason Bosley, you know, things will be brought out during the day, but they will be, you know, they'll be brought in at nighttime. So we're going to make it look, you know, I don't want to make it look commercial at all. I want to, you know, it to fit our store. So everything, as you look at from the roadside, will look it'll look beautiful, you know. At nighttime, everything will be brought in, so you're not going to tell.
Okay, thank you. And then just finally, the Historic District Commission. And again, we don't have the minutes, so I understand that. And we don't want to talk about it right now, that's fine. But it sounded like the number of parking spaces would be reduced from the proposed 32 to some other number to make it look less like a big parking lot right on the hill. And if that was a suggestion taken by CHA, that would be good to know.
I don't know, Mr. Parent or Mr. Guskowski, which one of you would wish to answer that?
This is Pete Parent for the record. So what we ended up doing is eliminating the grass overflow parking spaces that we had originally proposed and shifted the gravel parking spaces further into the site away from Childs Hill Road. The original proposal had the gravel parking spaces closer to Childs Hill Road and then these areas that are kind of on a curve where we have the gravel parking. Now, we're originally intended to be overflow, you know, a gravel base with a grass covering. But in response to the Historic District's commissions, we shifted the gravel parking over closer into the site and then eliminated that, those grass overflow spots.
Thank you.
If I might, John Guskowski?
Yes, John, go ahead.
And so we also have moved the, as Pete said, we moved the driveway or the parking farther away. Also added some additional landscaping between the parking area and Childs Hill Road to buffer the visual impact.
Thank you. That's it for now, Jeff. Thank you.
Yes, Sid.
The access road into the proposed business is going to be 24 feet wide. Currently, can you tell me how wide it is? Six feet, seven feet, eight feet wide?
I don't know, Mr. Guskowski or Mr. Parent, which one of you wishes to answer that?
This is Pete Parent. Give me one moment and I can get a measurement for you. To be clear, the existing driveway is a, you know, a residential drive and this is, you know, a commercial drive. We're kind of regulated to provide at least 24 feet for two-way traffic. The existing drive is 10 feet wide.
Okay, so 24 feet is a requirement? That it'd be that wide?
That's the standard minimum for two-way traffic for a commercial lot, yes.
Okay. Second question is, what do you know about overflow parking along Child Hill Road? I guess my consideration is instead of having all the parking on site and the clearing and everything, if Child Hill Road could be used as overflow?
I don't want to speak for the Historic District Commission, but I think that they would find that more offensive than the parking on the site.
And then just lastly, the existing sidewalk in front of the property along Child Hill Road, what are your plans for that?
So the recommendation from the traffic engineer was for that sidewalk to be replaced. Our position is that that sidewalk currently does not provide connectivity to any other sidewalks, either along Child Hill Road or 169. So it's kind of a sidewalk to nowhere in both directions. So, you know, replacing that with a five-foot wide, brand-new shiny concrete sidewalk, I think would probably be a detriment to the area more than an improvement, seeing how that it wouldn't provide connectivity unless there are plans to provide a more extensive sidewalk network on Route 169 or on the other side towards the Academy. Because I said, you know, it doesn't provide access in either direction.
Okay, and then just lastly, I may have been mistaken, but I thought there was a third story or floor in the building that was going to be used for the apartment. Kind of sounds like it's the second floor that's going to be the apartment?
Mr. Guskowski, Mr. Parent?
I would actually defer to Jamie and Jason Bosley on this. I haven't been inside the building.
If one of the applicants wishes to answer that, just let us know which one of you is answering.
It's Jamie Bosley answering. The back apartment is on the second floor.
Okay.
There is an attic. Maybe that's what you're thinking of the third floor, but it's a pull-down attic.
Okay. So will the entire second floor be one apartment or will be there two apartments or will it be a mix of retail and residential?
It'll be a mix of residential and retail.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Sid?
No, no, not at this point. Thank you.
Gail, you wanted to speak or ask some questions?
Yeah, I just, some of the letters referred to an Oktoberfest at the Coventry store. And I was wondering exactly what happens with an Oktoberfest for this kind of retail business?
Yes, I
This is answering?
Yes, we're not going to be doing any events. That's a new location. As of, I don't think we're going to need them as far as drawing in. That was, that was earlier in the year when we worked with the Coventry and we did both locations as Oktoberfest. We're not going to do any kind of events like that. You said we've come so long, it's just a short period of time. So I think that, so don't worry about that.
It's like a sale.
It is, it is like a sale, but we're not going to promote big, big events. You know, before we used to have, you know, music outside. It's not going to be like that anymore. So that being said, we're just going to, I mean, if you want to picture the stores, you know, American-made, homage-made furniture, soft music, people walking through. It fits the house perfectly, 1800s house, you know? The barn is going to be restored. Again, from the outside, you're not even going to know that it's a store, you know? We don't plan on changing anything. We're happy to be in Woodstock and be a part of everything, so. That's, technically said, there's not going to be any big parties or anything like that, so.
Anything else, Gail?
No, that was it. Thank you.
I just have a few questions and then I'll see what else commissioners have. Some of these have already been answered. Do we have Delia, if you know this, have we gotten any input from the Town Highway Department Foreman regarding the proposed widening of the driveway on Child Hill Road?
I don't recall getting anything responded.
I didn't see anything, okay. We just might want to requery him just to make certain, just because of that widening of the driveway.
So I notified the Fire Marshal and the Highway Foreman on July 31st. And let them know it would be discussed at this meeting this evening. And I don't believe I have a response.
All right. My suggestion would be just to ask them one more time. You know, it's up to them if they wish to submit anything or not. Some of these questions are going to have to wait to see what the new documents show. It's likely my things, questions will be answered with that. But, and so we have on the record, we have the proposed bond estimate. And am I correct? Either Mr. Guskowski or Mr. Parent, that bond estimate is proposed at $12,100, which is the EMS control bond.
Pete Parent, that number is correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. Yes?
I have not sent this to design professionals, but it will be likely to.
That will be up to what the commission wishes to do. We can ask that. If you wanted to ask your question, go ahead.
I have not sent this to design professionals for review. If you'd like me to, please let me know. And then they can weigh in on the bond estimate or you know, if you have concerns about driveway access or anything else.
I'll leave that up to the commission. If the commission, you're not going to take a vote because we're in public hearing. But if the consensus of the commission is one way or the other, we'll go accordingly. Is there anyone from the commission who feels we should send this to design professionals or feels we should not send it to the design professionals? I'm happy to hear what the consensus of the commission is, in which case, if we're going to send it, we need to get it sent. Well, we can't send it tomorrow, but we could send it come Monday.
I could send it.
Or you can. What's the consensus of the commission as far as to have design professionals? There are engineering review or not?
I would, Jeff, I would advocate to send the plans to design professionals for their review.
Sid, did you want to speak on it?
Yeah, I would agree with some particular attention to the stormwater work in the front yard. That's going to be very visible. It's excavating around some mature trees. I think that should require a special review, well, a thorough review by design professionals.
Any other commissioners who wish to weigh in on sending it to design professionals? Anyone objecting? Okay, so it sounds like
Jeffrey, Fred Rich?
Yes, Fred?
The only suggestion I would have is make sure you got the new plan, just send them and not these.
That is correct. We will need to make certain we have the new plans. Otherwise, we'll have to go accordingly and see where we are. So we will make, you know, you've made a note of that, Delia.
Yes, that's what the
Anybody else on the commission? Otherwise Yes?
Yeah, Tim Young. I do, I just, I do have, I use Childs Hill Road quite a lot. I do have some concerns with the sidewalk to nowhere.
Well, one question, Tim. Tim, I'm just going to interrupt you. Are you talking about sending it to design professionals?
Oh, yeah, all right. Well, that, that might be a good reason to do that, too.
So, yeah, because right now I just want to get the consensus from the commission if we're going to send this to design professionals. And then I'll recognize you if you have any other questions.
Yep.
Okay. Unless there's any other commissioners, then it sounds like we'll send it to design professionals.
Okay.
The, whatever the, the second, the updated plan is. Okay, we'll note that. I'll get back to, my only other question I have that I'll recognize you, Tim, is I just wanted to get clarification, either, I think John Guskowski, you had talked about lighting, if I'm correct. What actually is being talked about for lighting or unless it was you or Mr. Parent, is the existing lighting there to be used? Is there any additional lighting? Or lighting that's going to be shown down on the sign being proposed?
Right, this is John Guskowski. Yeah, the only, only there is no, there is no new, new sight lighting to be proposed. Just, you know, the only illumination would be, you know, the existing porch lighting and things like that or any existing you know, building mounted things near the door. you know, building-mounted things near the doorways. But there's no, there's no proposed new site lighting proposed.
Okay, and as far as sign, even though there's the existing sign at the current property, not this property, but where Rusty Relic is, just be mindful of our sign regulations as far as also placement of signs within the right-of-way of the town, or actually Route 169 is actually right-of-way of the state, which I'm assuming you guys are aware of.
We're not putting anything in a town or a state right-of-way, the sign will be on private property.
Okay, so, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to get that for the, for the record. I'm going to hold on to the questions because it's, I'm probably going to get those answered with the additional documents we'll get. Any other commissioners have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do.
I'm sorry, Tim, I forgot to recognize you, Tim, then Sid. Go ahead.
I just have some concerns about the sidewalk. It isn't really a sidewalk to nowhere, it is a continuation of the sidewalk that goes in front of the Pink House. It is in conjunction with the crosswalk that's been put across 169. It is a measure of the Academy kids that, I don't know whether they go to the post office or Sweet Evelinas, I'm not sure, but they, you'll, you'll see a lot of them during school, assuming that we're going to go back to school someday. It does give them a chance to get off of the, of the road. There's going to be an increase in traffic. I don't know, is eliminating the sidewalk is necessarily such a great idea? You know, I like, it gets close to an intersection, a busy intersection, it gives people a place to stand where they're not in the road. I think there should be some consideration to that, this, you know, you talk safety. We all know what a bad corner that is, and people standing in the road on a bad corner is not always a great idea. So, somebody put that sidewalk there for a reason, some, one, one day, a long time ago, when it really probably wasn't always needed, but right now, I, I think it's, you, you see people use it. I, I get concerns with that being eliminated and putting people out in the road.
I recognize Sid, then Doug.
Mr. Guskowski made mention of the operating hours being 10 to 5. Just curious, is that seven days a week?
For the record, John Guskowski, I'll, I'll defer to the, the Bosleys on this, and I, and I, my statement was generally 10 to 5. But Jamie and Jason, I would, I would defer to you.
If one, if one of you would wish to answer, just let us know which one is answering.
Jamie Bosley.
Yes.
We are open day through Saturday, 11 to.
Did that answer your question, Sid?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, I think something's breaking up.
If you can just answer that again, please, that would be helpful.
Sure, we're open Thursday through Saturday, 11 to 5, and Sunday, 11 to 4.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Doug?
Yes, this is Doug Porter, I have a question, I guess to the applicant's advisors. How did you determine the number of parking spaces that you've proposed?
Mr. Guskowski and Mr. Parent?
So, I'll, I'll start the answer and maybe turn it over to Pete, this is John Guskowski. The town of Woodstock does not have hard parking formulas based on use. So, we basically did this in conjunction with the Bosleys based on, again, a desire to have a relatively minimal number of parking spots, but be sensitive to the, you know, to be receptive to a, a thriving business. And this is the, the number we came up with. If Pete or the, or the Bosleys have additional comments, but it was as much an art as a science because there is no formula for, for Woodstock parking regulations.
This is Pete Parent, the, the number of parking spaces that are proposed here generally reflect the total number of parking spaces that Bosleys have at their Coventry location and their Woodstock location combined, so that's, that's kind of the the rule of thumb that we use to kind of say, well, does that make sense when we, we came up with the number that we had?
Did you have any other questions, Doug?
I'd like to follow up, Jeff.
Sure.
This is Doug Porter again. It's interesting in that you're showing anywhere, I don't know what is, I'm sorry, what does your new proposal show for parking spaces?
So that the parking remains unchanged in the new plan, it's 21 spaces.
Okay, 21 spaces, and this is Doug Porter again, if I look at the traffic survey, traffic report that was given to us, they're showing in the peak hours, looking at two to three cars entering. And so if you have a traffic study that's showing a peak hour demand of three, three cars, why are we having spaces for 21? There seems to be a discrepancy between the traffic study projecting a very small number of ins and outs and a site plan that's showing a significant area of parking.
I don't know, Mr. Guskowski and Mr. Parent, you want to respond to that?
And I, I'm referring to page six of the traffic study. The trips generated by the proposed development are summarized in the table below.
We would have to review that with our traffic engineer, Doug.
Yeah. Also request that you review, there are commercial standards for parking in retail facilities, and there are national standards, there may not be town standards, but there clearly are national and state standards, and I think it would be appropriate if you would review those with what you're presenting.
Noted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and just to follow up on Doug's question about parking, I'm assuming the, you're proposing two handicap spots? Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, I'm assuming that meets the minimum requirement of the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act?
It does.
Okay, and I know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. And some of the other things that have to be put into place around disabled parking spots as far as safe and stable surfaces, that's all built into the ADA, which has, we have no control over that. If the federal law requires certain things be done regarding handicap spots, they have to be done no matter what we say about it. So my understanding is, having looked at what's been listed on the plans, some of the stuff that's been looked here as far as paved accessible parking spaces, that emanates from the ADA federal law, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to have that clear on the record in case anyone was questioning why certain things have to be done with those spots, we have no jurisdiction over the ADA, you have to follow it. Any other questions from commissioners?
Fredridge, Jeff, I have a comment, more than a question.
Sure.
It, it goes along with what Doug said about the number of parking places. I have to disagree a little bit with my learned colleague there. I would rather see some empty parking spaces in there than cars parked on the side of the road there. You know, there, Sundays, there's a lot of cars parked on the side of the road when church is going on next door. And I, I just think it'd be better if they had a few empty spots in the backyard rather than having cars parked on the road. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Fred, anything else from commissioners?
Yes, if I can, Jeff.
Yes, Joe.
Just two quick questions, you, Jeff, you were asking about the lighting, and John Guskowski talked about the no anticipated additional lighting, just wanted to ask about the sign, so does that imply that the sign going on the private property would not have any lighting on it?
Mr. Guskowski, did you want to answer that?
Yeah, John Guskowski, I, I will invite the Bosleys to, to contradict me about this, but the, the, the current sign in South Woodstock is not lit, and, and we're using that sign, we'd intend it to, to be the same.
Okay, and Sid's question about the apartment reminded me that I thought, and maybe I was reading a different application, but I thought there was a comment in all of the documents about the owners living in that building and also having a rental apartment. Did I miss something or make it up?
Mr. Guskowski, or?
I, I, I don't recall, I don't recall submitting that statement, I, I don't believe it's the intent of the Bosleys to live there. I, I, I don't believe we submitted that statement, but if, if someone surfaces it and inadvertently says that, we can, we can correct that, but I, I don't believe we made that statement.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the commission at this time? Okay.
I, I guess it sounds like we may need a motion, Jeff, to continue the public hearing if we're missing documents.
Well, we're going to, I just wanted to mention something to the public, I know we are going to be certainly having time during this entire public hearing process to hear from the public. I just also have to be mindful how late we can stay here at Town Hall. Usually 10 o'clock is our, is our limit, although we're, I don't know, well, we can sleep over here, I guess, right? It's technically an emergency room here, but, but also from the, from the sense of the public weighing in, it would be helpful for everybody, including the public, to be able to see whatever updated documents and other documents that have, that haven't been entered into the record, for them to be able to see, so. We have, we don't have much else left on our agenda anyway. So, unless there's anyone from the public who does wish to speak, it may, this may actually be an appropriate time for us to look to continue the public hearing in order to get the additional documents so everybody can see them, and then hopefully we'll also get the meeting minutes from the Historic District Commission, and we'll see if there's anything further that comes out from the upcoming Historic District Commission, and it sounds like there's some additional answers to questions we're waiting to get that we'll get in some documented form. Unless the commission has any objection to that, this well may be the appropriate time for us to look into continuing the public hearing, given where we stand with things.
Can I jump in again, Jeff, I, I didn't mean to curtail any conversation, and if there are members of the public who want to comment now.
We'll be here from them, we're going to be, we're going to be limited in how much time we have.
Sure.
If there's some members of the public that may wish to wait until they can see additional documents and actually the current set of plans. It's 9:45 now, I can open it up to some members of the public, I, I'm gonna, if we do, likely, I'm only going to be able to give like 10 minutes of time tonight. It's not unusual that when we continue a public hearing, that we have the commission and with the applicant and applicant's representatives go through the process we've gone through, and then subsequently, when we continue a public hearing, we have much more time then to be hearing from members of the public, so we're not at all going to skip over members of the public, but given we do have, we have some additional business items we need to tackle tonight. If we do want to hear from members of the public, I'll, I can only really give 10 minutes of time before we have to pivot to the rest of the meeting and then be able to be out of Town Hall to close up Town Hall tonight. So if there are any members of the public who do wish to speak, I'm going to give you three minutes of time. I'm going to be very strict about that, and if I'm then not able to recognize anybody else, it's just because we've run out of time tonight, but we encourage you to connect in when we next continue this hearing, which we will be making a decision tonight when we're going to continue it, too. If there is any member of the public who does wish to speak tonight, let us know right now, otherwise I do need to move on finishing up the, the meeting and deciding when we're going to continue this public hearing. We're just scrolling through. If, if you could just state your name for the, for the record, please? Please state your name for the record.
Jeff, I'm not sure if you're talking to me, this is Jean McCallan.
Yep, thank you for coming tonight, if you wish to speak or say something, we'll give you the three minutes of time right now.
I would like to speak at more length in the next meeting, but I thought maybe I should just add a little information to the parking discussion, it's clearly of some concern, and the current modification to parking, which I gather will not be changed, is simply taking the existing gravel parking spaces and moving them back on the lot and moving them uphill, which in some ways makes them more visible than they were earlier. There really is a question about this parking, the, I think it was Doug Parter who mentioned page six of the traffic study. I also looked at the DPH Public Water Screening Form for the development, which indicates that the maximum daily population served by both the apartment and the retail site, the whole shebang, will be 10. So, again, the number 21 sounds as if it is still significantly excessive. There already is some shielded parking north of the house, there, I could go into other issues, but it makes more sense if there are going to be further changes on the site plan, I suppose, to wait for them, but I thought in terms of exploring the parking further and the volume of parking, that the public water screening information might also be important to consider.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public, we're just scrolling through the list here?
Jeff, Frank Ola.
Yeah, one second here, we just need to get to where you are, okay. Yep, Frank, go ahead, I'll just remind you, you have three minutes.
Thank you, I'm somewhat concerned about the fact that the language that is being used here is somewhat evasive, in other words, the current operating hours are Thursday from 11 to 5 and Sunday, 11 to 4. That did not answer the question in terms of what the proposed hours are going to be for this piece of property. In other words, if it's a larger store with more volume that's required, they may in fact change that. In the way they talked about lighting, the current lighting that's on the house, that did not include the idea that the fixtures would be then changed, because if you look at the, the sidewalk or the walkway that is being proposed for the handicap parking, and we're talking about a, a business that would be open in the winter until 5 o'clock, we all know that by 4 o'clock it is pretty dark out, and I cannot imagine how a handicapped person, whether it's on a wheelchair, crutches, or cane, can walk on a dark path that distance without any lighting, and therefore the lighting, if they are telling us it's coming off the building, will be spotlighted rather than downlighting that would have lighting poles to help them navigate that area. And I would also assume that the handicapped area should be, parking area should also be lit. So I'm very dubious about the vagueness of the language because of the statements being made either by the owners or the proposed owners of this property and by their clients, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming, Frank, is there anybody else right now who wishes to speak in the, in the few remaining bit of time we have tonight, otherwise we're just scrolling through here. So just bear with us as we take a look through the list. Don't see any? Okay, so what I'll do is, the matter then before us will be to continue the public hearing, we have two options. One is, we do have two meetings already on the docket for September. One is the September 17th meeting, that's our regular monthly business meeting, we are going to be taking up who knows what new additional business items, plus we do have the continuation of the Woodstock Country Store gas station, and I'm assuming we're going to once again get a lot of members of the public for that to take time, or we have the September 3rd, is that correct, is that the first Thursday? Yes. Yes. Which is a meeting, we consider that a special meeting just because it's not the regular monthly business meeting. If we so chose, we could continue this public hearing to the September 3rd. I don't know if that would give Mr. Parent or Mr. Guskowski enough time to get us whatever stuff we need to get. Although it sounds like we may already have some additional documents that we just need to enter to the record. But I'll open it up to the commission which meeting. It may make sense not to have two big public hearings on the same night. We may get boxed out of time and not be able to handle two of these hearings in the same night. So my suggestion would be, I don't tend to make motions this chair, but my suggestion would be to consider the September 3rd meeting that we already have on the list. That's a special meeting and we're not going to be taking up any routine business that night. But I'll defer to what commissioners wish to do as far as to when to continue the public hearing.
Fred Rich?
Yep.
Is it me?
Yep, go ahead.
If I'm lucky, I will be here on the 3rd, so I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Okay. If people wish for, to try to do it on the 17th, we could try. Our only other option would be the 10th. The 10th is not currently on the docket. That would have to be a special meeting in and of itself. We want to try to maximize having commissioners present. I don't know which would work better for people. The 3rd, the 10th? Again, I wouldn't try to cram everything into the 17th. I know we will not be able to make that magically happen, even though I know we are wonderful in what we do as commissioners. We just won't be able to pull that rabbit out of the hat.
Mr. Chairman, I'm working on the 10th. I arranged to take the 3rd and the 17th off because those are our standard dates.
I can always write you a doctor's note excusing you from working.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's going to cut it.
So even though I'm a past president of the State Medical Society, that won't work?
Probably not. Unless you want to go in and work as a nocturnist for me.
No, I get called many times at night anyway in what I do, so I'm okay. So.
Jeff?
Who's speaking, Sid?
Yep. The other concern with the 3rd is getting our engineering firm to review this. And often there's some back and forth between the dueling engineers and that can take some time. I'd rather get a thorough review of everything by both engineers than try to shoehorn it onto the 3rd with incomplete information.
Okay.
I hate to misscale on the 10th, but that might be a better option. So not meet on the 3rd, meet on the 10th instead, and then again on the 17th.
Yeah, our only options then are, you know, we only have four Thursdays in September. The 3rd, the 10th, the 17th.
We have the 24th as well.
Yes, we do.
Jeff, this is Joseph. The 10th would be okay. Again, disappointed that Gail would not be able to attend. But we also are looking to get feedback from the Historic District Commission. And I think you mentioned, or somebody mentioned, there's a meeting near the end of this month.
Correct, the 26th.
Minutes.
We are waiting for the September, the July 22nd meeting minutes to come out. And I would hope that if there's a meeting on the 26th based upon state statute, there's a short window by which meeting minutes need to come out of any municipal agency. So I would think they would then endeavor to make that deadline per statute and we would then get that meeting minutes as well. So, but does anybody else have a problem with the 10th? Or is it, are there others who are going to be unable? I want to make certain we can have as full of a contingent as we can on this matter of commissioners.
Jeff, it's Mark. I'm going to be away on the 10th.
All right, so that's two commissioners. Is there any other commissioners who would be unable to meet on the 10th? What about the, Delia, do you feel that if we were to hold this on the 10th, would that give enough time for design professionals? Today is the 20th. You're going to be sending it out to them, or you won't be sending it out tonight, but.
Well, it gives them an extra week compared to the 3rd.
Right, it does.
Three weeks.
Okay. Is there anybody else commissioners who can't make the 10th or the other option is the 24th? Those are, that comes down to right now, those two days.
I am off on the 24th.
Mark, are you available on the 24th?
Yes, the 24th would work.
Is there anybody on the commission who cannot attend on the 24th? That would be an off Thursday in the month, but nevertheless, it's still on a Thursday. I'm not hearing from any other commissioners that the 24th would be a problem.
Jeff, can I make a motion that we, can I make a motion that we continue this public hearing until September 24th?
Yes, you can.
I'll second it.
Who seconded? Sid?
Sid, yep.
Was there somebody's hand up relative to, was there a commissioner's hand up that I missed? Maybe not. I just want to make sure. I didn't skip a. Okay. Doesn't look like it. Okay. All right. So we have a motion by Doug Porter, seconded by Sid Blodgett to continue the public hearing to September 24th. Are you both okay with this motion listing it at 7:45 PM even though we start our meeting at 7:30?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion by the commission on the motion?
This would be in place of the September 3rd meeting?
Well, right now, well, that's going to be, that would have to be a separate item. Right now, we have nothing scheduled for September 3rd. So I can, if, well, there really is nothing right now at all we have that isn't a regular business meeting. So at this point, I have on the list that if we're not going to do this on the 3rd, the September 3rd meeting would be canceled.
Okay.
Unless you guys want to meet and we can chat and talk about whatever we want for a few hours, but I have a feeling you don't want to do that. So right now, we would be canceling, but that would have to be a separate motion to cancel a scheduled meeting, which I'll get into right after. Any other discussion on the motion on the table? Hearing none. I'm going to go through the roll call on this. And let me just remind myself who we have, who is voting on this. So, let's see, I seated. Okay, so Joe Adalatta?
Aye.
Mark Blackmer?
Aye.
Sid Blodgett?
Aye.
Gail Dickinson?
Aye.
Jeff Gordon, I will vote aye. The other Jeff, Jeff Marcott?
Aye.
Okay. Doug Porter?
Aye.
Mr. Rich?
Aye.
And Mr. Young?
Aye.
That so passes. We will reconvene this public hearing. Right now, this would be the only item on for the special meeting, which would mean then that would give a lot of time for further discussion and for further public comment and input that night. So I will note that. To follow up on this then, since we have no business of anything on the 3rd of September, it would seem to me that we could actually cancel that meeting. So I will take a motion if.
Commissioner Rich, I move we cancel the 3rd, meeting on the 3rd of September.
Is there a second?
Second. Adalatta?
Okay. Motion by Fred Rich, seconded by Joe Adalatta to cancel the scheduled meeting for September 3rd. Any discussion on the motion on the table? Hearing none. Joe Adalatta?
Aye.
Mark Blackmer?
Aye.
Sid Blodgett?
Aye.
Gail Dickinson?
Aye.
Jeff Gordon, let me think about that. Albow, guys. Jeff Marcott?
Aye.
David Morse? Are you still on, David? Let's check. Yeah, David, can you hear us? Okay. If you need to unmute, hit the spacebar. Okay, we don't know. Fred Rich?
Aye.
And Tim Young?
Aye.
One last chance. David? All right, well, I'll have to, we don't know his vote, right? So I'm just going to list not voting. It passes anyway. So we will note that. I will send something off to the Town Clerk's Office to notify that that is so canceled. Then real quick to get through the rest of the meeting, the old business item is looped because the public hearing is being continued. CEO report, the office update. I just want to let the commission, remind the commission that we do have hours for Tina in the budget that come out of our line item, even though it's all part of the same Town Hall pot of gold. We do have mileage that will also be coming out of that listing. I've spoken with Karen Fitzpatrick about it. And also because we have the land use clerk hours now, that is also going to be hours for planning and zoning will come out of our line item. So we're going to start seeing some of that as we're continuing to look at our budgets in that regard. Otherwise, Tina, you have the CEO permits. I know you don't need to read through it all. I don't know if commissioners have any questions relative to the CEO permits that are the report that's listed there? Okay. It looks like there's quite a bit of permits looking at June, July, and August.
Yes, it's been very busy.
Yep. And we do, as we usually do, we do our due diligence as well. Oh, actually, that's the budget. Is there anything from an enforcement point of view you need to let us know about? Tina?
Yes, I continue to work on enforcement items as time allows. And I do need to, there are a few things on my list for the next couple of weeks. I don't, not going to mention it at this point. Probably at the next meeting, I'll give you an update.
Okay. Well, if you have active enforcement items, we certainly let you do whatever you need to do.
Yes.
We don't intend, we don't interfere with that and then you report to us when you've completed whatever you've completed.
Yes.
Okay. Is there any citizens' comments? Not on any agenda item. Okay. Budget review and bills. We always take due diligence handling taxpayer money. And so we do keep track of where we stand with our budget. I don't need to go through that since we all have the reporters or questions or comments from the commission relative to the budget. We have no bills that we need to vote upon. And I've got a couple of bills of small amounts that I reviewed and verified as chair and I signed off on with that, okay? I don't think we have any correspondence outside of, from the public hearing, I believe. So there's nothing there. That, I know Attorney Roberts was really looking forward tonight to going through the whole history of planning and zoning in the town of Woodstock, going back to its founding in 1686. But Rich, we ran out of time tonight. I apologize for that. So.
Maybe you can reschedule that September 3rd meeting and we'll do that.
That sounds good, yeah. I will do that. And I think the executive orders by the governor lets us do that. So otherwise, that takes us to Fred Rich's.
Move adjourn.
Somebody? Who seconded it?
Tim Young.
Okay. So motion made by Fred Rich, seconded by Tim Young. It's a motion we can't discuss, so we're going to go to a roll call vote. Joe Adalatta?
Aye.
Mark Blackmer?
Aye.
Sid, do you dare to oppose it at the same time? Gail Dickinson?
Aye.
Jeff Gordon, I will vote aye. Jeff Marcott?
I will vote aye as well.
David Morse? I don't think we hear from David, okay? So I'm going to say not voting. Fred Rich?
Aye.
And Tim Young?
Aye.
That so passes. It's amazing. Every single time Fred makes a motion to adjourn, he has such influence, nobody votes no. So we stand adjourned at 10:05 PM. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Stay safe. Have a good weekend.
Thanks, Jim. Night.
Good night.
Good night.